Hi, and welcome to the October Board Wrap-Up Show with Dr. Pennington. The Ponca City Board of Education held their October meeting recently, and we're going to talk with Dr. Pennington about a number of things that went on in that board meeting. I guess one thing that's very important, Dr. Pennington, is that we're going to have a vote in February to elect a new board officer.
You know, it's an annual board election. Every February, we elect one board member unless there's been a retirement or a resignation or something's happened, maybe a member's moved out of the district. And so this time, it is Ward Number One, and that's the seat that's held by Robin Riley. And my understanding is, I mean, Robin hasn't come out and announced anything yet, but I'm pretty confident that Robin's going to run again. And, you know, Robin actually got appointed to our board several years ago when we had a board member that had to give up their seat because they did not get all the points they have to get in order to retain their seat in their, what we call, new board member training. And Robin's brought a different perspective to the board. He is, you know, a native of Ponca City, which most of our board members are now. But he's a good board member. He asks good questions. You know, he obviously takes his job seriously and always does his homework, you know? So, I mean, you never know what's going to happen, but, you know, from my perspective, you know, Robin's a solid guy to have on the board.
And that will take place in February. The filing period isn't until December.
Right.
But folks will have a chance over the next month and a half to make decisions on whether they would like to be part of that program. You also talked, I know a lot about testing, a very expensive testing process that Ponca City is going to implement into at least one of our elementary schools.
What we looked at, we can, you know, we're always looking for ways to improve student achievement. And one of the, one of the things, one of the areas that, you know, it's not just Ponca City, but it's really across the state and really across the nation. I mean, everybody is always, we're always, we struggle with reading. And for those in our audience, if you're someone who reads well and likes to read, it's one of the most perplexing struggles that students have academically is reading and the ability to read and the ability to understand what they read. And so last night, we bought a proposal to the board to purchase a program that Scholastic, who probably, you know, from a teacher's standpoint, when you talk about reading, probably the number-one name is Scholastic, that just recently, this particular part of Scholastic's been bought, you know? It's kind of like corporate, it's like anything else, right? What was a company yesterday is bought by somebody else today and would be somebody else tomorrow. Brand names don't seem to matter much anymore. But it's, but this is a particular software system. It's called System 44. And what this does is it is targeted to those students who are in the bottom 25% in their reading. So they, these students have been assessed, whether it's a state test or a local assessment that we use, and they're just our poorest readers. And so it is specifically designed for those students, and it does what in the, in the school world, you may, we call targeted interventions. So that means that when a student's been identified as having a specific reading problem, then this software provides a prescription. So it identifies exactly what kind of lessons they should be doing, what kind of activities they should be doing to correct whatever deficiency's been identified. Then it also prescribes for them what they should be reading, okay? And then it also prescribes what the teacher should be doing in a small group setting to help that student. It is expensive. It's expensive because it is so individualized, and I think it's expensive because it works. I mean, education is not any different than any other business. When you have a product that is successful, then you can always market that product at a higher price than something that is not successful. And System 44 and its companion, Read 180, have been on the market for a little bit over 20 years now, and they've got a proven track record. Again, you know, you are talking about students that perform very, or they're not, they're just not good readers. So even though these students make, may make a dramatic difference in their reading, sometimes it's, they still don't read as well maybe as some of their classmates do. But we've got to get them, you know, we, I guess the best way to think about it is, you know, if there's four groups that kids fall into, unsatisfactory, limited knowledge, proficient and advanced, I mean, we'd like every student to be proficient. But if a student is unsatisfactory, we can't get them to proficiency until we at least get them to limited knowledge. So we have to do that, and it's a long process. And so, you know, we're forth, we're very happy that the board went ahead and went ahead with that because it is expensive and, you know, I mean, if you look at it and if this does work and it just rolls out to the rest of the district, it could be a pretty significant cost for the Ponca City schools, which is one reason why we haven't done it before. We've been aware of this for a number of years. This is probably the, you know, third time in the 12 years I've been here that we've sat down and looked at reading scores and we've thought about what's next for us to do. We've tried this, we've done A, B, C, D, so what's left? What else is in that, kind of that bag of tricks that we can pull out, that we can use to help kids with? And this one just continued to come to the forefront. We passed on it before because of the expense, but we decided this time that we're in a position that we just had to, we had to step in because right now, we have some money because of some additional funding we picked up last January. But when you look at the state budget discussions and you look at what may happen next year, this may be the only chance we have to implement this because the, while it is expensive, it's $66,000. And that sounds like a lot of money, but remember, we're talking about a $34 million budget. But, but, so we've got that $66,000 that we can spend this year on a one-time expenditure. So it's not money that is committed forever for this cost. Once you make the initial purchase, it costs about $1,200 a year to do this program. So we thought we would try it, we'll pilot it for a year and a half and see if it helps our kids, and if it does, then we'll try to find ways to bring it to other schools within the district and try to give those kids, you know, I mean, I guess you think of it this way, we're trying, we want to wipe out that part of our population that's unsatisfactory. We want everybody to at least be limited knowledge, and of course, once we get that done, then we can maybe really sharpen our limited knowledge kids and see if we get, I mean, we're still trying to get limited knowledge kids proficient, but this has been a nagging portion of our school population for a number of years.
Not to get off the track, but you mentioned it, so I'll go ahead and throw a question out to you. You mentioned education funding, and if you pay attention to what's going on with the state legislature as they prepare for the 2016 session, you know, they talk about already, talking to departments statewide about more cutbacks and more funding cutbacks, and so I guess that is not a very good forecast for education in our state.
Well, you know, I mean, we, we're about, when times are good and there's, it seems like we get about 32% of the state budget, when times are bad, we get 35% of the state budget. 35% of less is still less, you know? And, and, you know, it's interesting, the, when times are bad, the legislature wants to focus on, wants to tell us what they did for us and that we didn't, this last time around, we didn't take the cuts that other state agencies took. But the reality is, we have less money than we had last year because of some decisions the legislature made. There's one they made without auto-tag money. We talked about this last spring and that there was some, the legislature was thinking about changing or capping the way auto-tag dollars are distributed. We were told we were going to be held harmless, but we're seeing a loss of revenue in auto-tags because of a change in the way the money's distributed. So, you know, so even though we were held harmless, school districts across the state are still going to have less money than they had last year. But we've got two concerns right now. You know, the first one is, is that we're seeing a decline in sales tax revenue across the state, at least in Tulsa, Oklahoma City, and that those are the big retail hubs. Obviously, oil production is down because, first of all, because we don't drill as much oil as we did two years ago. And in addition to that, we cut the amount of taxes that the state collects on whatever oil revenue it gets. So we're producing less oil, and that oil that is coming out of the ground is paying less in taxes. We have, because the oil industry is not drilling as much, people have been laid off, and because of that, you don't have as much income tax as you have when those individuals are working. So we have a problem this year, right now, because we have laws in place in Oklahoma that if revenues come in less than what the budget was based on, then we take across-the-board cuts to all state agencies. So we're concerned about that. Is revenue going to drop enough that a state budget cut is issued across all state agencies? We hope that doesn't happen. But then the big issue is what's going to happen with next year's budget, and we're talking about the 1617 school year. And the Equalization Board, which is, which is, which is the governor and the Secretary of Education, the State Treasurer, I think the Attorney General's in that group, they will, the Ag Secretary, they'll come together in December and they'll look at revenue projections for the state of Oklahoma for 1617. They'll look at what, where revenue is right now, and, you know, economists will come in and they'll give them projections. And then they will certify a amount of money that the legislature can appropriate for the 1617 fiscal year. Now, they do that, the December allocation is kind of a baseline. They come back and they adjust that in February before they do their final work. But right now, the discussion is, is that December initial allocation, is the way to think of it, is going to be somewhere between $700 million and $1 billion less than it is right now. Now, $1 billion is a lot of money. Now, again, we have a, I think the state budget, I don't remember what that number is right now, but it's, you know, it's several billion dollars. But the reality is that the legislature is probably going to have to cut budgets once again. And I don't know that they'll be able to hold us harmless this time. I hope they can. I mean, obviously, I'm sure that if somebody were sitting here from the Department of Human Services, they would tell you that it would be important they hold Human Services harmless, or the correctional system would say the same thing. What's important, what makes schools different is that we not only have state money that's affected when the economy goes, takes a turn for the worse, but we also have local revenue dollars that are affected too. So when oil production goes down and it affects state dollars, it also affects local dollars. So we get hit twice. When sales tax revenue goes down, not only does it affect the general fund budget of the state of Oklahoma, but it also affects the 1017 fund, which is a body of money, a pot of money that back in 1991, when the voters in the state passed tax increases on themselves, an income tax increase and a sales tax increase for the purpose of supporting public schools, there's money that goes into that fund off the top before the legislature ever sees it. So we get, I think it's 1% of income tax revenue that's 1017 money. We get a quarter of a cent of sales tax money. Well, if those numbers are down, we're going to get hit in the 1017 fund at the same time we get hit in the, in the general fund. We're going to get hit with gross production taxes in the general fund and in our, in our local ad valorem dollars. So we get hit lots of places. So it's, so it's very important that the legislature do the best they can to keep money flowing to public schools as much as possible because we don't have any other way to generate revenue. If you're the University of Oklahoma and you have your state budget cut 10%, you can raise tuition to help cover that. We can't do that. If the career tax take a hit, they can do, they can raise the fees they charge to adults who take their classes. We can't do that. So it, so it's really important. So it's going to be interesting to see what happens. I think that, I don't think that the legislature's hands are tied in this. I think there's some things they can do. I think, you know, there are some tax loopholes and inconsistencies that they can, that they can change, that could do some things to help drive improvement in revenue. There are obviously, you know, everybody always talks about, you know, there are two things that always happen when revenue's down. You have one group that screams and hollers that we need to cut fat out of government, that there's too much fat. Well, we've been basically operating under the same budget for the last, I guess, six years now. In education, we've taken the largest percentage hit in the country. 23% of our state funding's been cut, not been restored yet. So I'm not sure really how much fat there is, but that's people like that. The other thing that they like, that people like to call for is tax credits, that we're given too many incentives and too many tax credits. You know, obviously, from my perspective, that's what I think ought to be corrected. But I'm sure that somebody in the economic development world can set this table and tell you why every one of those tax incentives are important, because they bring companies to Oklahoma, which creates jobs that help people pay income tax. So we've got, you know, we've got some issues. My opinion, you know, and I think if you, unless you're, you know, committed to a certain philosophical position, I don't think it's very hard to look at this and not say that most of, a lot of the problems we're having are self-inflicted. We, our legislature did the exact same thing that Oklahoma legislators have historically done. When oil revenues are up, we cut taxes because cutting taxes is always a popular thing to do. Unfortunately, when we did that in the past and when state government started to falter or go bankrupt, because that's really what we're talking about here, the legislature had the ability to raise taxes, not politically popular, but we did that, and it kept our head above water. We, we can still do that. It takes a 75% majority of the House and the Senate to do that. You know, I don't know how bad the crisis has to get before the legislature would consider doing something like that. Or the legislature could vote to put a tax increase in front of the people. But for some reason, in the minds of our members of the legislature, they've decided that even voting to put something on the ballot is the same thing as voting for a tax increase, which is just illogical to me. You know, why it would be, why it's, why they consider to be, and it's not, and I want to say, it's because they believe it's a political problem. You know, they don't, they, they are afraid that when they run for reelection, somebody's going to say, "Well, you voted to put an issue before the voters, and those voters voted to pass it, and now our taxes are higher because you took a vote to do that." I mean, again, to me, that kind of logic just doesn't, doesn't fly. You know, basically, what we did in this state back in the 90s, when we passed State Question 640, which is the, which is the tax situation we have right now, which a 3/4 majority of the legislature or a vote of the people is the only way we can raise taxes. We instituted, we basically said taxation, we took it out of the hands of our elected representatives. And so we established a direct democracy on taxation. Well, if that's the philosophy, then I think that we have to, in times like this, we have to put issues before the voters and give them the opportunity to express their will. Now, they could very easily say no. They could say, "No, we don't care that, that we're going to have 50 kids in the classroom in our schools. We don't care that, that, you know, as a result of this and schools start closing, that we're going to have mass consolidation in the rural areas of Oklahoma." Okay? But at least the voters get a chance to express their will. You know, from my perspective, what 640 says is that legislature, we only want you to raise taxes in critical times, and if there's, if 75% of you, you know, can't agree to do that, then let the people vote on it and let the people decide. But, and the thing, and the thing about it, Phil, is I don't know that this is, this is not like we're going to have a billion-dollar shortfall next year and we're going to be done. You know, if we have a billion-dollar shortfall next year, then the year after that, the budget starts at that billion-dollar hole. We haven't filled the hole back in from the tax cuts we took in, or the revenue cuts we took in 2008, 2009. You know, we're, our revenues are going to be 10, are 10 years out, are going to be lower than they were 10 years ago, and, and nothing is costing less. You know, everything, except the price of gasoline, you know, we all know it's less, and the price of natural gas is less, which is one of the reasons why the Oklahoma budget's in the situation it's in. So, you know, we've cut taxes, we've continued to find ways to lower property taxes, we eliminated the intangible, not, yeah, it was the intangible tax that we modified. So we've done all these things that have just, that have taken revenue out of the system for public schools and state, and other areas of state government, and the legislature, you know, wants to then say, "Oh, jeez, we don't know what to do." Well, it's not like they weren't warned. You know, I remember the 80s. I remember, I was just starting to become an administrator at that time, and, you know, the really terrible economic situation Oklahoma was in, and, and the courage it took for guys like Henry Bellman and Steve Lewis and Stratton Taylor to come together and to put a proposal together to, which actually passed the legislature to raise taxes to support schools. You know, that particular piece of legislation, initiative petition was circulated that put it up for a vote of the people, and the people in the state overwhelmingly said, "We support public education." And we've just lost all that. We've just given it all away. And, and, you know, again, I know that there are some individuals out there who really truly believe that if we just cut taxes enough that we can make Oklahoma the greatest, that people will flock to live in this state, that businesses will come, and all these people will come and make investments and will grow beyond our wildest expectations. They've tried that in Kansas since 2008. They've, they've cut taxes more than we have. They've done more of those kinds of programs than we have. It hasn't worked there. It hasn't worked here, and I don't know any place that it's, that it's worked. A lot of people like to point to Texas. Well, you know, you can't, Texas is not a fair comparison. Yes, they don't have an income tax, but Texas also has one of the largest ports in the world, in Houston. They have tremendous more oil and gas than we have. You know, they, I mean, they're one of the large, they're not, they're one of the largest economies in the world because of the size state they are. So, you know, you just can't make that comparison. So it's a, you know, it's a, it's a, and property taxes and sales taxes are higher in Texas than they are here. So anyway, that's where we are. We'll see what happens. There's lots of discussion. You know, Senator, Governor, Senator, Governor, President Boren has, is floating an idea for a one-cent sales tax in the state that would go for education. Public education, we'd get the majority of that. Career tech, we'd get a percentage of that, and higher end, we'd get a percentage of But I don't know that that, again, if we have a billion-dollar shortfall and all that sales tax does is replace the money that we're going to lose next session anyway, then we're just where we are right now. That doesn't, that, you know, the intention of, when President Boren rolled that out, the intent, the idea was, that was going to kind of jump-start our schools, invest enough in public education that we can start attracting young people into the profession. But again, if, if, if the floor is knocked out and all this is, is become, in that one cent sales tax becomes the new floor, I don't know. It's frustrating to me, you know? This is about the third or fourth time I've been through this now as an educator, and I hope that somehow, whenever we get through this, I hope the legislature will come up with some safeguards. You know, we've put some safeguards in place for increasing taxes. Maybe we need some safeguards in place for lowering taxes. You know, that you, maybe that you can't cut taxes until revenue adjusted to inflation gets back to where it was in 2009 or 2008, and then we can have rational discussions. Because what we do right now is we, you know, we pass a bill that says, "Well, we can't cut taxes this year, but we're going to cut them in three years as long as we have revenue growth." Well, if you cut a billion dollars out of your budget, you're eventually going to grow back. So you're still cutting taxes when your revenue is less than it was before you ever started the tax-cutting process. So, you know, we just do things to hurt ourselves sometimes, and, and this is a big self-inflicted wound.
Dr. Pennington, if you could, I know you might have some things you want to talk about. I know the YMCA, are we still partnering with them? And then I'm just going to leave it kind of open to you to anything else you'd like to add.
Well, we, you know, we've, for the last several years, we have an agreement with YMCA that our swim team uses their pool, and we pay them for that. And they also provide some swimming lessons and other things for the students at Lincoln because Lincoln sits right there. So, you know, we spend $1,500 a month with them, and that seems like a lot of money, but it's a lot less expensive than building a pool and maintaining an aquatic center would be. So we're very happy with that arrangement. You know, the YMCA's been very good to us, and we partner with them on some other things. You know, they use our school courts for their, for their youth basketball league and those kinds of things. So, and I guess, Phil, the final thing would be, I just want to thank those who have voted today. I mean, we're filming this on October 13th, and so by the time this airs, we'll know whether the bond issue was successful or not. Obviously, you know, I hope it is because I think these are needed improvements to our sights. But kind of on a, I guess, maybe a, maybe a kind of a philosophical, I just hope we have good turnout, and I hope that, that, you know, we can, whatever happens, you know, we've, you know, as people ask me, "Well, what, you know, what do you feel like? What do you think?" You know, I never know. I gave up a long time ago trying to predict how these things were going to come out. You know, the fact that you have to have a 60% majority makes it very tough. I've had bond elections that we've not been successful in, where if it were any other election, it would have been a landslide. But, but, you know, when you look at the support we've had from the community, the way that the Chamber of Commerce, the way that the city of Ponca City, the way that various organizations in town have rotted around this issue, the way that our booster clubs, our band boosters, our athletic booster clubs came together to work on this, you know, I just appreciate all those people. I mean, all the wonderful letters we had to the editor and the endorsement that we got from the Ponca City News on Sunday. I mean, I thought, I thought the article, the thing that, the editorial that Tom wrote when the paper announced that they'd sold the radio station, you know, I thought that was, that's probably the best thing I've ever, that I'm aware of that Tom's ever written. But I thought his editorial in the Sunday paper was powerful because he, you know, what you saw in that was somebody who loves this community and wants to see it move forward and recognizes that for us to move forward, you know, we have to do things like this. I told somebody the other day, you know, basically, in my experience, I think there are, there are three types of communities. There are communities that are, that are dying. There are communities that are maintaining, and there are communities that are thriving. And I think you can drive into a community, you can pick that up pretty quick just by driving around and looking at their school facilities. There are lots of places in Oklahoma right now where they're dying, and it's not necessarily just the size of the community, but it's because that community has quit investing in its schools. You know, for them, a bond issue is, well, when we've got a hole big enough in the roof that we have to put buckets in the classroom, then maybe we'll pass a bond issue. the roof that we have to put buckets in the classroom, then maybe we'll pass a bond issue to, to fix that. Uh, but we're not going to ever really repair anything and we're not going to renovate or remodel or renew anything that we have. Then you have communities that are maintaining and, uh, and, and they're keeping their stuff up. They'll, uh, renovate buildings, okay, but they're not, they're not really investing in anything new. Okay? Then you have the thriving communities and, uh, and those are the places where, where they are, um, making investments in their schools all the time. They're building new buildings, they're, they build, um, you know, and, and we've been to those places, right? I mean, we go to those places and we've seen those football stadiums they've built in the last five years, five, last 10 years, the basketball and wrestling arenas, the baseball fields, uh, the fine arts facilities that you drive by. And, and those, and, and those, the, they have a, that community has a real sense of itself and it sees a bright future. And so, you know, uh, I think that we're going to find out a lot about our community today and, uh, whether, whether we're maintaining or whether we see ourselves as thriving. And, uh, my personal opinion is, is we're ready to thrive. Um, you know, there's lots of things that have happened in Ponca City since I've been here that probably if I'd known they were going to happen, I might not have accepted this position. But, you know, uh, those things, we've been, uh, hit in the mouth, um, kind of a coaching term, but we've gotten back up and I personally believe we're ready to thrive again. And I think we can do that. I think this bond election is the first step toward that. And, uh, my hope is that we pass this bond issue. If we don't, you know, because that's, you know, a real possibility, uh, then we'll go back to the drawing board and we, and we'll look at, we'll try to figure out what we can do, what, how do we need to restructure the package that we can get that 60% necessary to move forward because we still have things to do. And, uh, and, you know, it's all about trying to find the, the projects that you can get 60% of the people to vote on. It's not always what you want to do. It's not always, you know, you have, because you've got that 60% majority, that's the coalition you have to put together. But I'm hopeful, um, and, uh, because, you know, uh, if I pass, if we pass this one, then this will be the last bond issue I ever do. And so, I'm pretty excited about that prospect because I don't like doing this. This is probably the, one of the least favorite parts of being a superintendent for me is having to, to run these bond elections and having to, to, to go out and, and, I mean, I've always loved talking to people about our schools, but, you know, it's, it, this is the part of the, this is the political part of the job that, that I just don't like that much. Some people thrive on it and the bottom line is, and, and, uh, you know, somebody asked me the other day, um, I actually had somebody that thought that somehow we got paid extra if we have a bond issue and I told them, "No." I said, "All, all we're doing by doing a bond issue is putting a lot more work on myself and Brett Smith." So, um, you know, if, uh, if we were, if, we do this because it's something we feel is necessary, it's not for any other reason. Because again, you know, um, I get paid the same whether we pass a bond issue or not. So...
We'd certainly like to have that extra money though to do some things.
Oh, we could, the, the, what this does for us, I think, I think that if we pass this, the, the, when we move into those new facilities, I think the pride that our student body will have, and, and look, our kids are proud to be from Ponca City. I don't think there's anybody that's ever been, we are proud of Pohai, we're proud of that building, we're proud of that facility, we're proud of our school. But I just think you will see such a change in the attitude that our athletes have, uh, that especially our football team, but our basketball and wrestling and baseball, that, that change in attitude and really a hope that we really can compete and be better. And then I just can't imagine what it's going to do for the fine arts people, for those students who are, who play instruments, to be able to take their instrument into a facility and to be able to produce a sound that is, is just going to be incredible for them. I mean, I'm not a musician. I don't, I guess it's the, it's the equivalent of, of hitting a three at the buzzer, you know? That's the emotion that those kids are going to have and that is good for our kids. And, uh, so we have a chance to do something great today.
Thank you, Dr. Pennington. That is going to do it for the board wrap-up show for October 2015.